Okay, good evening. Welcome to the May 27th, 2025, meeting of the Edgemont School District Board of Education. Do I have to move to get back into public session if we didn't go to exec? Or do I just, no, all right, so we just proceed, all right. First up, approval of minutes, we don't have any. Second is approval of the April 2025 treasurer's report. Can I have a motion? First Grace, second Josephine. Brian, I had a question about that. I noticed in the revenues that there was a substantial amount, I forget exactly how it was phrased, revenue that we hadn't received yet, and most of that fell in the category of money that we'd be expecting from the state in one form or another, either aid or sales tax. Is that a question of timing, or are we?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the report that is being looked to approve tonight is from April. Since that time, we already have received some of those funds. So we get paid sales tax four times a year, typically after the close of each quarter. So after when March closes and after June, and every three months thereafter. So we did receive approximately $215,000 in sales tax in May that will be recorded on the next treasurer's report. And we've now accrued for approximately the same amount to come as part of the second quarter. We don't receive it until July because the quarter has to close first in June and then, so we accrue for it in this year. So if, if you actually look at the anticipated earnings on sales tax, we had budgeted 860,000. I think we're going to be like 850-ish, so we're pretty much on par. On the other side of the state aid, we are still due, I believe, approximately $700,000 in BOSI's aid. That's all expense-based aid. And if you recall, during the budget process, we get a run from the governor's proposal and then ultimately as a legislative approved proposal, our local BOSI's gives us a better estimation based on our actual spend expenditures with them. So we know that number to be real. It's based on what we've actually already committed to them. That should come to us in June, and if not, we'll accrue for it in this fiscal year before the year closes. The only other place where there's any material reduction is excess cost aid. Again, we anticipate a pretty sizable amount coming about 350,000 in June. In totality, if you look across the whole revenue status report, we are anticipating that we'll earn about two and a half million above what was budgeted for due to several reasons. Death benefit, additional state aid opportunities, obviously insurance, I'm sorry, interest earnings, significant increases in tuition from other districts and from individuals. And so we've had a very, very strong year on the revenue side.
That's what I'd remember hearing, which is why I was a little confused when I saw that. So thank you for clearing that up. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, the treasurer's report has been approved. Next up, we have recognition of community. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, uh, let me start off by saying, and this is a little different, so recognition of community includes the opportunity for community members to offer their thoughts to the board. As we shared in our letter on May 15th, we intend to add an opportunity for the public to ask questions about the superintendent's and/or board president's reports. Although that will ultimately require a change to policy 1360, I would like to move to suspend that policy tonight to allow public questions regarding those reports after the board has asked its questions following the superintendent's report. Those questions should involve the content of the reports only and should not duplicate questions that have already been asked. Each community member, as with regular comment, can speak for up to three minutes, and public comment will last for a total of 30 minutes. While some questions will be answered right away, others might need a bit more time so we can gather accurate information and follow up with you afterwards. May I have a motion to suspend the policy for this evening? First Heather, second Ami, all in favor? All right, for the remainder of public comment, the first public comment period will operate the same way it has. As stated in our policy, we encourage public participation on school-related matters at board meetings, whether those matters are on the agenda or not. However, this is not a forum for the discussion of matters that are not school-related. Also, our policy states that any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. This is a meeting of the board that's being held in public, the purpose of which is to conduct the business of the district. We value your input, but the board can't and won't respond to questions asked in this public comment period because we have a specific agenda for this meeting. If warranted, the board of the, or the administration will follow up on issues raised during public comment outside of the meeting or potentially add it to a future agenda if there are relevant updates for the community. Each community member can speak for up to three minutes, and public comment will last for a total of 30 minutes. Jennifer will give you a verbal warning 30 seconds before the end of your time so you can wrap up your remarks.
Be crowded tonight, wow. Am I starting? Okay, hi. Barbara Gronquist, longtime resident of Edgemont. First of all, in regard to the board election, I want to say a big thank you to all the candidates. I want to say thank you to the independents who made this a real election, who energized a new group of residents and brought important issues to the fore. And I'm very happy to see such a record voter turnout. That was excellent. I want to congratulate the three trustees that were elected. I look forward to you working directly with the community. And a big thank you to Lauren Lapman for running an excellent candidate forum. I learned a lot. I'm encouraged by what a couple of the candidates said in the process. Mark mentioned the importance of thorough analysis before making decisions and cited Demings in God We Trust. All others must bring data. I hope in the future, the board and administration will gather input from a diverse cross-section of stakeholders, use that input in their decision-making, and share the basis for the decision with the community. I believe Mark said you need to show the evidence to build your credibility, and that is so true. It may not always be easy, but hearing different viewpoints usually leads to the best solution in the end. I think we're all prepared to accept or at least live with a decision we disagree with if we feel confident that it was well researched and debated. And I still hold out hope to see the data that synthetic turf is very safe. Jeff Blank mentioned the concerning trend towards single bid contracts, which I hope we'll avoid in this district, and emphasized the importance of transparency and real communication, proactive, not performative. It needs to be a two-way street, not communicating the decisions that have been made. The reinstated board meeting Q and A, the inclusion of public comments in the board meeting synopsis, and the coffee conversations are a good start. There are a lot of challenges facing New York schools, and by working together, we can achieve the best results. I have two suggestions for the district. Reach out to a broad cross-section of residents in the planning stages for new initiatives, including residents without kids in school. And let's remember that we have a sizable group of residents who contribute socially, culturally, and financially, but are not eligible to vote. They too deserve to be heard. To my fellow residents, show up and speak upon issues you're concerned about that affect the whole community. You may find kindred spirits where you least expect it. And frankly speaking, I think that's what brought us the board meeting changes and the universal pre-K. For the SB and C, if available, nominate more candidates than there are open slots to make it a real election. And I hope that all of us will avoid snarking in social media. That is not becoming for any one of us. The district's motto, "All Means All," is a good one. In fact, it's really great given what's going on all around us. Let's make sure it also applies to the district's engagement with the whole community in the future and that you engage directly with the residents and not via an intermediary. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have Mr. DeRosa.
Yes, this evening, we are very excited to have Anthony DeRosa with us, our director of athletics. And Mr. DeRosa will be recognizing some of our students for their track and field accomplishments, girls and boys lacrosse, and sharing some highlights from signing day.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. So, so. Thank you, Board of Education. It's my great pleasure to share with all of you some outstanding achievements from our spring student athletes. From the track and field league meet, we had a number of first-place finishers and also designated league champions. Arjun Rao, boys 110-meter hurdles. Max Ellenberg, boy shot put. Matt Bench, boys triple jump. Tristan Stott, boys high jump. Sophia Kumar, girls pole vault and girls 4x100 relay. Nora Agor, girls 4x100 relay. Sarah Hugh, girls 4x100 meter relay. Ava Thomas, girls 4x100 meter relay. Sophia Kumar also broke the school record in the pole vault, clearing a height of 11 feet. She is ranked first in Class B, first in the section, and ninth in New York State. All-league second place. Nora Agor, girls 100-meter hurdles. Evan Bolo, boys 100-meter dash. Ava Thomas, girls 100-meter dash. Griffin Mendel-Dork, boys long jump and boys 4x800 meter. Alexander Chang, boys 4x800 meter. Andy Wang, boys 4x800 meter. And Asher Cadet, boys 4x800 meter. Malcolm Dees, boys high jump and boys 4x400 meter relay. Derek Valenzuela, boys 4x400 meter relay. Andy Wang and Randy Wang, boys 4x400 meter relay. Those students also named all-league. Also all-league finishing in third place, Evan Bolo, boys 200-meter. Sarah Hugh, girls triple jump and long jump. Matt Bench, boys high jump. Griffin Mendel-Dork, boys 1600 meter. Hannah Evangelista, girls 4x400 meter relay. Nora Agor, girls 4x400 meter relay. Kate Ruwan, girls 4x400 meter relay. Misha M, girls 4x400 meter relay. Outstanding accomplishments at the Westchester County meet, Sophia Kumar defended her title in the girls' pole vault, becoming the Westchester County champion for the second straight year. In girls' lacrosse, junior Annabelle Pregay reached a milestone of 300 saves in her career. Seniors Penelope Kraus and junior, senior Penelope Kraus and junior Addie Kaplan both eclipsed the 100-goal mark for their careers. In boys' lacrosse, David Rosen, David Rosen recorded his 100th goal of his career. And junior goaltender Chase Harrison reached the 200-save mark for his career. Other recognitions, we had a signing day ceremony that was held for three of our athletes who will be continuing their careers, athletic careers in college. Isabella Passia, soccer, playing at King's College. Eliza Press, soccer, playing at Union College. And Jordan Fisher, wrestling, going to Hunter College to wrestle for our former head coach Pete Jacobson. I want to congratulate all of our student athletes for their outstanding achievements this season. Thank you.
Thanks.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. DeRosa, and congratulations to all the athletes.
Thank you. I have actually a special presentation tonight. I'd like to just share some information with the public and with the board. I received from the New York State School Boards Association, Board Excellence Recognition Program. This program is designed to acknowledge those school board members who strive to continually expand their governance skills and knowledge. And accordingly, they have recognized three of our board members who have completed advanced training and have provided these certificates that I'd like to present this evening. Two of our board members being recognized this evening are absent, but Nalish Jane is being recognized for 150 points for his ongoing association of professional development and accepting additional leadership roles. And for 2025, and an additional 75 board points for ongoing association professional development on board achievement. And also for Nalish, he's being recognized for his support of public education, commitment to educational excellence and dedicated leadership, which has enhanced the quality of education for all students in our district. Now, Rain Jabor is also being recognized for the same. And last but not least, Grace Lynn, whose support for public education, commitment, and educational excellence and dedicated leadership has enhanced the quality of education for all students in the district. So on behalf of all of our students, thank you for all that you do and continue to do to advance our district. And that's it.
Okay, next is acceptance of gifts. So it's you again.
Yes, tonight, there are two gifts, substantial gifts on the agenda for consideration. That's almost $40,000 being presented this evening. That's from Edgemont Hoops to Greenville for the small gymnasium renovation in the amount of $19,114.38. And also from Edgemont Hoops in the amount of $20,482 to Greenville Elementary School for the small gym main backboard replacement.
Do I have a motion to accept these gifts? First Ami, second Heather. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you very much to Edgemont Hoops for extremely generous gifts. It's going to provide important additional funding to enhance our facilities and improve the experience of our students. Once again, we are grateful for our strong partnerships with our community organizations and hope to continue these partnerships in the next year. Moving on, we have board committee reports from the communications committee.
So we met on May 13th. We had a regularly scheduled meeting with the committee and Stu Shinsky from Focus Media. The committee's role is to provide advisory-level oversight of the district's communications with the community. I think the thing we spent a good bit of time on was discussing the meeting that Jennifer and Dr. Hamilton had with Dylan Pine regarding a community communications advisory group and how to reach the broader community. Currently, there's a draft of a postcard that will be going out to residents to move away from solely electronic channels to gather interested parties for the committee. And we'll we'll get more into the specific structure and charge for the group once we hear back from community members. We'll be asking the committee to evaluate how well the district is communicating with the community on school-related issues, including the budget and what we should be doing differently. It's a little bit out of date, but we did talk about sending out voting reminders for the budget and board vote, as well as an e-blast with the results, I believe, all went off. And we continue to discuss revisiting the policy on responding to public comments at board meetings, as well as other possible strategies to offer additional community engagement, in particular to our senior citizens. Dr. Hamilton is also interested in creating a workshop series relating to community conversations on race. Mr. Shinsky presented a draft communications plan regarding the portrait of an Edgemont graduate, including how our Edgemont's customized version would distinguish itself from New York State's template. And the communications committee is going to review the plan, offer feedback on priorities, refinements, and additional opportunities. Lastly, we also discussed the next issue of the Edge, which should be out very soon, maybe this week.
Excellent, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is the president's report. Josephine kind of previewed some of this already. At our meeting on April 22nd, the president of the ECC suggested the creation of a community advisory committee to evaluate the effectiveness of district communications and offer recommendations to improve outreach. We agree with his assessment that better communication will lead to greater understanding and better discourse under district matters. As a result, as Josephine said, we will be creating a community, it's a tongue twister, community communications advisory board to look at this issue next year. And a postcard-seeking volunteer should be going out shortly. We will develop the specific structure of this community and its charge, charge, once we see the response we get. However, to give people a general sense of what they're signing up for, it will be tasked first with examining the district's modes of communication, as well as the communication of other school-related organizations for effectiveness, and then comparing them to how other districts communicate and what they communicate. Ultimately, the committee will be asked to recommend ways to make the district's communication both more effective and more cost-effective. We expect part of this work will include examining how well the district is reaching out to those parts of the community that do not have school-aged children. Now is your chance for your input and experiences to make a difference on an issue of great importance to the community. So please keep an eye on your mailbox. Moving on, we are up to the superintendent's report.
Okay, this evening, under the superintendent's report, there are a few things I'd like to share with you. First, later this evening, under the business report, you'll be asked to officially certify the results of the annual school budget vote and the Board of Education trustee election, which takes place on May 20th, 2025. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my sincere gratitude to everyone who contributed to the successful passage of the school budget with an overwhelming 80% of budget of votes cast in favor of the school budget. The outcome reflects a strong vote of confidence in the collective efforts of our community partners. Your commitment and diligence throughout the process are deeply appreciated. I would also like to extend my heartfelt congratulations to our newly-elected and re-elected Board of Education members, and I look forward to working collaboratively with each of you as we continue to advance the district's mission, mission, and vision. And I also look forward to our continued effort to become an exemplary district focused on excellence, where every student is seen, heard, valued, and respected. There is also a resolution on the agenda this evening. It is marked as K-15, which is the Authorization for Attorneys Designated to Negotiate and Approve the PDA for Software and/or Technology Resources. And I'm going to ask Paul if he would just come up and give some context for you for this item. You'll recognize it from last year, but for our newer board members who may not, I think it's important for you to understand that particular resolution. Paul?
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton. And I do have notes because there are a lot of acronyms, if you might remember. So this would be our second year participating in this. As you all know, roughly five years ago, New York State enacted ED Law 2D, which is the Student Data Privacy Act. One of my roles in Edgemont is to data, student data, data privacy officer. And what this collaborative is, is it's the RIC1 Risk Operations Center. And what they help us do, and all of the districts in the collaborative, is behind the scenes, they negotiate data privacy agreements with a lot of the services that we use through BOSI's. While I, while I do them with third-party vendors that are not affiliated with BOSI's, we do have a lot of services, as you know. Through BOSI's, we use a lot of their software and applications. So in addition to negotiating those DPAs, those data privacy agreements with those vendors, they also serve as a resource for a lot of data protection ordinances and the like that I might need on a day-to-day basis. So it's been incredibly helpful, and I hope that we can continue to participate in that collaborative.
Great. Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Of course.
Any questions from the board? Any? All right.
Thank you. As Josephine mentioned in her report, the district is currently in the process of developing a comprehensive 360, 360 approach to addressing all acts of hate. This initiative is designed to ensure that there is a clear and consistent message regarding the standards of behavior and expectations for how the district responds to incidents where anyone is made to feel othered. Our goal is to promote clarity, uniformity, and accountability across the district. This effort will include working closely with students, teachers, and administrators, as well as offering informative sessions for parents and guardians. While we recognize the broader influence that may shape attitudes and behavior, including those found in pop culture, music, and social media, there must be no ambiguity when it comes to intolerance, particularly here in Edgemont. Edgemont stands firmly against all expressions of hate in any form. We are committed to fostering a school environment that is safe, inclusive, and respectful of all students and where everyone is treated with dignity. We do not have all the answers, and this subject can be extremely personal, personal and sensitive. If you have experience or perspectives that we can all benefit from, I encourage you to be a part of the solution. If you're interested in joining the All Means All Committee and this work to support moving forward and developing this 360-degree approach, please contact Amy Moseli. That's A-M-O-S-E-L-H-I@edgemont.org, or you can reach out to me directly at khamilton@edgemont.org. There are two other items on the superintendent's report that I'm going to ask Brian to talk about momentarily. The first, as you know, we have been able to successfully partner with the YMCA to launch the pre-K program for Edgemont students. It's only the first step in the effort to expand the program, but it's a step in the right direction. We hope to be able to offer more seats in the future. I'm going to ask Brian to give us an update on this and where we are relative to moving forward with rollout of pre-K. Following that, we have another opportunity that Brian will spend some time talking to you about. And this is an opportunity to partner with the E Club to update our weight room and address some much-needed renovations there. We'd like to give the board a little background information and socialize this with you before we move forward and process any questions that you may have. So Brian, I'm going to ask you to take those two items.
Thank you. So as Dr. Hamilton said, we're super happy about our incoming partnership with the YMCA. In the background, just so you know, our legal team has drafted contracts, a standard contract that they are using across all of their school districts that have developed UPK programs over the years. We've shared that contract with the YMCA. the years. We've shared that contract with the YMCA in advance, although we don't yet have a defined number of students. So the timeline for the process for us now is the, there is an open preliminary application online and available for anybody who wants to go to edgemont.org/district/pre-k or just search in the search bar, pre-K or pre-kindergarten, and it'll come to that page. The preliminary application is not a binding agreement for families, but those who are interested in this and ultimately learning more. As of this afternoon, we had 28 preliminary applications submitted, which is fantastic. And we thank all of our community partners for getting the word out. We've put flyers up throughout many of the local businesses. We've sent them out to our own communication channels, but PTA, PTSA, ECC, Newcomers Club have all also done a great job in sharing that news. And we start to see, as each of their own kind of timed communications go out, we get several new applicants coming in on the survey, which is great. We will go through a vetting process in terms of date of birth to make sure that those are valid. But on, the survey will close on the 4th of June. Now that we have more than 16 applicants for this, we will need to do a random lottery draw. The draw will happen on June 6th. And the families who are selected in that first iteration for eligible seats will be notified with additional information. Those who are wait-listed at that point in time will get a separate communication, kind of indicating what the process will look like going forward from the waitlist. Families who have been selected through the random lottery will be provided opportunities to do site visits over the course of about a week and a half at the YMCA in White Plains. And they'll be given a opportunity to secure their seat by June 13th. At that point in time, if there are any seats remaining open due to families choosing not to hold the seat, we'll open up the waitlist, and the process will kind of continue in iterations until we've, we've come to a finalized list. There is still some question as to how many seats we will have. We've been guaranteed 16 at a minimum, and a maximum of 21. And it's really dependent upon what classroom, based on square footage for each student per requirements in New York State, the YMCA chooses to allocate. And I think they're kind of, I know that they're waiting to hear from us on our responses to the preliminary survey to get a sense in terms of where we'll be with that. It's our hope that it won't take us more than two or three iterations of opening the waitlist to be able to say this is our group going forward. But of course, we'll maintain that waitlist throughout the year if any seats open up to provide opportunities for families to work their way off of that list.
Great. Thank you. You can move right on into the next one.
And the second one, and Anthony, if you don't mind coming up as well, we have a, we've been provided a great opportunity, not that dissimilar from the gifts that were accepted this evening from Edgemont Hoops. Edgemont Hoops had approached us about making some improvements to Greenville's, what do we refer to that gym as?
The gym.
As opposed to the APR, right? The small gym, thank you. The APR, they did a lot of work. We refinished the floors last year, and we've done work at Sealy and the high school with considerable donations from them. So in a similar vein, E-Club has reached out to Anthony with some opportunities to potentially provide us up to $25,000 investment to help us renovate the weight room and fitness center. And Anthony, if you could just give some context to the need there and what the vision might be. I have, Anthony's done a great job and gone out and gotten specifications for this and some drawings drawn up for us that I'll share with you as he starts off here.
So it's no, no surprise that, that the weight room fitness center, as we call it, is in, is in pretty rough shape. It's, it's been the same for probably close to 20 years at this point, without any significant upgrades to the, to the space. So when the E-Club approached me, I saw this as an opportunity to just take a deeper dive into, into what that project might look like. Reached out to a couple of vendors. First one that came in is actually on bid. So that's, that's really great. He did a great job with reimagining and redesigning the space to maximize what we have there. It's not a tremendously big space. So all of this includes new rack systems, free weights, as well as universal machines, and expanding our, our offering of cardiovascular exercise equipment. So it's, it's really a robust vision of what the, the space can be, and really excited about the opportunity to potentially redo that space.
Thank you, Anthony. When Anthony says on bid, he's referring to it's on state contract, which allows us, that is, it satisfies one of our purchasing criteria, so that we already know it's been bid. They are an awarded vendor for the goods and services that we are seeking here. As you peruse and look through this, you'll see that the quote is not $25,000. We're looking at all-in, including replacement of the rubber flooring to support this, about $154,000. And so we bring to the board today a proposal as to how we would fund that if we were to get your authority to move forward with this. If the E-Club was to donate $25,000, that represents a considerable portion of that. You may recall, when we received the death benefit from Joseph Baldwin, we were required to withhold 10% for taxes. That was at the determination of our legal counsel. And part of the acceptance of that, we had to let the fund administrator know that they needed to withhold those taxes. Subsequently, we were, the taxes were returned to us. And the plan administrator indicated that it is their belief that we have a tax-exempt status for this. It's taken several months, but we did get a legal opinion this morning, which has actually led to us being able to make this proposal today, that we are able to keep those taxes, the taxes that were originally withheld. That's approximately $50,000. In addition to that, we're holding about $20,000 in our trust and agency accounts for athletics. These are what we commonly refer to as TE accounts. The TE accounts you'll often see in our gifts and donations as a depository account. In theory, TE accounts are supposed to be custodial. So the best example would be a field trip. We collect money from parents. The money comes into that custodial account, and then it goes right back out. It's a temporary holding place for a short-term expense that's tied to a specified purpose. I say in theory, because there's actually, one of the Gatsby accounting standards changed recently, which requires us to move away from trust and agency accounts into what's called CM accounts, which are true custodial accounts. We are making that shift on June 30th, and part of our task per our auditors is to try to deplete any of these TE funds, the accounts in these funds, to the extent possible. In theory, if they're custodial, they don't have a year-to-year balance that accrues and carries over, because it came in for a specified purpose and it went out for that same purpose. So the $20,000 that remains in athletics TE lines has accrued over several years from donations and gifts and various sorts of funds that have come in across several different accounts. And this is, there's really no better way to affect all of the athletic programs than to put money into the fitness center there. So between those three donations, that's, those three groupings, it's about $95,000. So that leaves us with about $60,000 in total for, sorry, $50,000 in total from the general fund. What we know today is that even with this expenditure, I anticipate our fund balance at year-end to increase by about 1.1 million. So that money there is money above and beyond what our expenditures are or will be at the conclusion of this year. And so we certainly do have $50,000 that we could reallocate for this. Most notably, we had a tuition bill just come to us after renegotiating and ensuring that they billed properly, $35,000 less than what was originally in the budget for special education placement. We had almost $200,000 in released funds for related services for special education placements at BOSI. Those two in the last, aren't recognized yet in the Treasurers reports, but that $230,000 just moved from being encumbered as planned to be spent to off the books now, which would provide an opportunity to create a budget transfer to cover the rest. Last thing I'll say before turning it over for any questions is, if we were to proceed with this, we would start to take action on June 10th at the board meeting. We would have several budget transfers to initiate and place funds in the right place. We'd be doing a budget amendment to receive the taxes that were originally withheld and record it on an athletic line. And we would make sure that we were set up to begin the process as quickly as possible, to make sure that we fit this short window between the close of our athletic season now and the start of the fall athletic season, which is really in the summer.
So pre-K and weight room questions, if you have any.
I have a couple of questions on each. So do we have any sense of what the acceptance ratio usually is? Did you know I was gonna ask this? Somebody was gonna ask this, yeah, for pre-K?
No, I assumed that question would ask, because we asked the same thing. We very intentionally tried to communicate this. This should not be binding. People shouldn't feel as though they have to do a site visit before. And for practicality purposes alone, it makes sense to kind of get a cohort to be able to then have them do site visits and kind of work through. So I am sure there are people on, on the list of preliminary submittals that may not choose to take a seat, but there's no, I think it will be different in every district, and trying to apply in other districts here would, would not be appropriate.
Did people also give an indication if they would need before or after care? So we have the numbers on how many people are interested in either or both options?
Yeah, a little more than half of the current middles are seeking either before or after or both. And about the, about 45% are saying no, just from the nine to two period as well.
Just curious about that.
And that data we're collecting for the YMCA, because that's part of their financing plan, is, is the wraparound services is parent-initiated, and, and that's, they need to kind of understand to balance their books.
And regarding the weight room, are we waiting for additional bids to come in on this?
So we don't need to bid it, because the vendor is on a state contract. And so in theory, that's already been bid at a larger level with a larger purchasing power. And so it, it works out very nicely that we have that.
Pricing here reflects what they would give to a larger contract for a different participant.
And anywhere in New York State under, under that purchasing contract.
Two questions, both relating to the new weight room equipment. The first is just, what are the plans for the existing equipment? Can we repurpose any of it?
Yeah, what, again, great question. I don't think that we're looking, sorry, this, to repurpose, but we absolutely will be looking to auction it in some way. So ideally, as a whole lot, as opposed to individual items, because we just don't have the physical space here to store everything and slowly deplete that, that inventory. So there are a few options for public entities to put things up on federal auction sites where we can try to recoup some of that money. And we haven't factored in any of that recruitment in here. We'll look at any of that as just a positive as well.
Yeah, that's, that would be great. The second one is a sort of a half question, but first of all, I think weight training is just so incredibly important, whether you're an athlete or not. And I'm not sure if it's currently in the rotation in terms of the physical education curriculum, but it's just a fabulous thing for everybody to get involved in, so that they don't feel intimidated about going to the gym and strength training, just because they haven't had exposure to it, you know, in the secondary schools, so.
Anthony, can you speak to the PE programming?
So with our PE program, seventh and eighth graders are exposed to the fitness center as part of the curriculum. And then in our nine through 12 curriculum, where students choose, we are in the fitness center during the winter, because everything's inside. So that's, that's one of the opportunities that students have. So we do get a lot of exposure in terms of seven through 12 across the board in the fitness center.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Yeah. Can you just talk about the process for the lottery? Like, how do you actually do it?
Sure. So there's several different ways. We are going to livestream it for those. So for anyone who has submitted a response, we'll be sending them a link to that the evening of the 5th, after the survey closes. So we'll be hosting it on like our livestream Board of Ed channel. There's several opportunities for us to do this. My preference would be to use is ran.org is a random generating website that can be used. I'm considering purchasing, it's a monthly subscription for $5 for the event that would permit us to actually, it gives you the, anyone who is interested in ensuring that the mechanics are truly random, you can actually get the research behind that and the support for it, just to make sure people feel comfortable with that. Alternatively, we've considered getting a, just a lottery wheel and using raffle tickets and assigning raffle numbers to each individual based on the order that they came in. But it'll be some, something that is publicly viewable, and we can provide immediate feedback on.
I just have one question about pre-K. Would the children in the pre-K classroom experience some sort of alignment with our kindergarten? Like, how would that work in terms of, do, like, do we have even that sort of control over that, since it's in, you know, it's in YMCA, so I didn't?
The, with the YMCA in terms of the curriculum. And they do have a pretty standard curriculum, and they actually have the pre-K version of foundations for us. So it's like, there's definitely an alignment already there. But they do have a very, very, very organized curriculum in terms of like the fidelity, the professional development. And we are, we are overseeing the program. So it's, it's basically, I am meeting, since, since now, we started meeting with, with the program director, the curriculum director. And we are going to get basically quarterly reports, side visits, and that kind of thing. So we definitely, we can basically create our own, you know, requirements for, for that, yeah.
Yeah, I think we were, all of us went on the site visit and interview, were super impressed with their depth of knowledge.
Yeah.
And their readiness to, to onboard us. They're, they seem to be experts in developing, or getting UPK programs off the ground in many of these communities lately. So that's been a benefit for us.
Absolutely.
And the one thing I didn't share, and it came up as, as you were speaking, there, there is a, an expense for us. We do need to buy furniture or use furniture that we have existing. We don't necessarily have any, in a small curricular expenditure for the consumables that the students use. It's about $10,000. They've already given us the whole ordering list, like a shopping cart, that we would also, once the contract is signed, we would more likely than not make that purchase with remaining funds from this year, so that we can prepare ourselves for the summertime for that.
By the time you get to me, everyone, all my questions are covered, but anyone? All right. Looks like we're good. Thank you. Both really terrific opportunities, each in their own way. Appreciate the chance to create a UPK program and also the E-Club's generosity. So really exciting.
So we're, board's okay with us moving forward with the weight room project?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we'll have action items at the next meeting.
All right. Awesome. All right. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Then we are now on to the consent portion of the agenda. Is there anything anyone needs to take out of order? Nope. All right.
It is the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approve the following recommendations by consent vote. Personnel items I-1 through I-16, which includes appointments for leaves, per diems, chaperones, resignations, and district-wide school safety team member appointments. Student Matters J-1, which is the committee recommendations for the Committee on Special Education, and business items K-1 through K-20.
Twenty-one.
K-21. Thank you. Certification of the annual vote and school board election, approval of proposed Board of Education meeting dates for the 25-26 school year, approval of budget transfers and amendments, approval of BOSI's contract for cooperative services for 25-26, tertiary payments, agreement for Dr. Eric Small as the school physician and team physician, authorization to enter an agreement with ETA concerning a retirement incentive, approval of other consultant agreements, amendment to resolution of appointments for registrar for the 2025 school board election and budget vote, and last but not least, approval, approval of the graduation candidates for the class of 25, and the appointment of a special working committee of the board, which includes members Jennifer Demaree, who else?
Grace Lynn.
Grace Lynn and Ami Patel.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Sorry to throw a few curveballs. May I have a motion? First Heather, second Ami. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. Uh, that concludes this meeting. Our next business meeting will be Tuesday, June 10th, and then our final meeting this school year will be on June 24th. Meetings begin at 6:00 PM. Meetings begin at six PM, immediately adjourned to executive session and then return to public session here in the LGI at seven PM. Thank you.